Time being 6:30. Planning Board will come to order. This is to inform you that, as required by the law, the town may and will audio and video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. Is there anybody going to do that? Thank you. The first matter is PB 2019-39 and 40. Brian Langelia, and I believe he's represented by counsel.
I think we need to read the whole first paragraph.
Okay. First matter is PB 2019-39. Brian Langelia, as owners, seek approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard's 325-55 to amend/modify a site plan. Add items to professional/office space and change the parking for property located at 815 Route 28, MAP 24, parcel W 62 in the C-H-1 zoning district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Kroll, here representing Brian Langelia, this evening on the first two petitions that are interrelated.
Want me to read the other one into the record?
If you wouldn't mind.
Sure, glad to.
Thanks.
And in addition, we have PB 2019-40. Again, Brian Langelia, as owner seeks approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard's 325-55 to amend a site plan review special permit PB 2019-33 with waivers to reconfigure the existing parking areas and to allow for shared parking with the abutting property at 815 Route 28. Property located at 809 Route 28, MAP 24, parcel W 6-1 in the C-H-1 zoning district. Mr. Langelia is representative, please.
Thank you. Attorney William Kroll, representing Brian Langelia, on this petition as well, 39 and 40. We've been before you two times. The first time was to, when Brian was in the process of renovating the building, and was anticipating, he didn't know who would be renting the property for certain, and he was anticipating large retail showroom for large items. He now has a definite tenant who's an ecological engineer and needs professional office space and needs additional parking. So that's why we're here before you this evening, is to change the use of the building for professional, to professional/office space, as opposed to a retail showroom of large items. And related to that is to amend the site plan that was submitted, second petition, second time we're in front of you, for the boat storage on the lot, vacant lot next door. Now, because of the professional office space, there would be more employees that need parking. And he's showing on the parking plan that there would be six spaces for 815, the building at 815, that would be where some of the boat storage was going to be. So he's sacrificing some of the boat storage for employee parking, and that's what it amounts to. You didn't put any limit on the size, the number of the boats. We all agreed that it would just be determined by actual usage. So if we have employee parking there, then he would not be putting any boats there, but the boats would still be going other places on the lot. Also was amending it to show that the food truck.
Let's change its locations.
Right. It's shown on.
It's also up there, Bill.
Sorry, thank you.
I have a pointer. That thing. So the truck is now there.
That's good, right there, thank you. That's where the food truck would be located, instead of centrally located on the parking lot. Nothing else would change with regard to the food truck. So we're asking that you change the use to professional/office space, which is allowed in that zone anyway, and to amend the site plan to allow for the six spaces on 809 to be to employee parking for the building on late, on number 815. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Members of the Board, anybody have any questions?
Could we get Charlene's report first?
Sure. Charlene?
I'll do the PB 2019-39 first. And health, the septic system is sized to handle the converted flow to office use. The leach field has been designed to accommodate vehicular loading. However, the septic tanks are not, parking cannot be located over the tanks unless an H-20 tanks are installed, but you will have to have a conversation with them. Conservation, police, and fire had no concerns or comments. The change of use of the building resulted in the need for additional parking. This addition, my comments, the additional parking will be shared, parking with the property at 809 Route 28. B, the town engineer and I met to review the plans on October 23rd. At that time, we compiled a list of questions, concerns that were provided to the applicant. On November 7th, revised plans were submitted and appeared to be adequate. Do recommend that all conditions imposed pursuant to case number PB 2019-12 should be carried forward to this application. So if the Board does approve this, the original special permit, special permit decision and this new decision would have to be both recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and any conditions imposed on either would carry through. In the event that either property is sold, an easement will be required to allow for the shared parking between 809 and 815 Route 28. Do recommend that standard conditions be imposed. And then regarding the staff report for PB 2019-40, which is for 809, again, Board of Health had no concerns or issues, fire, police, and conservation had no concerns or issues. The town engineer and I met to review these plans as well on October 23rd. At that time, we compiled a list of questions, concerns that were provided to the applicant. On November 7th, revised plans were submitted. A few questions do remain, however. There is a 10-foot right-of-way along their easterly property line. The parking does encroach into this right-of-way. Just wondering, will this affect someone's right of access? And that is right here, shows us the right-of-way.
Could you do that again, please?
Yep. It's right there. There's a right-of-way. Might show better on the other side.
When I get a chance, I'd like to comment on that. I don't think that that's really.
Also, we had, the town engineer and I had suggested wheel stops are similar or recommended for the easterly spaces. So these spaces right here, three through six, again, all conditions imposed pursuant to case number PB 2019-33 should be carried forward with this application. And again, in the event that either property is sold, an easement will be required to allow for the shared parking between 809 and 815 Route 28, and also standard conditions are recommended. The reason I'm recommending that, and I have recommended a condition regarding the need for an easement, you can't give yourself an easement, but if one of the properties ever sell, is sold.
Subdivided, yeah.
Well, they're already subdivided, but, and we do allow shared parking, but there would need to be an agreement between the parties at that time that that can continue, or they need to come back.
You had something else?
I did. If I could, do you have a copy, or do you, can you put up the plan for 815? Because if I can get up and show you on the screen, Mr. Chairman.
Or do you want to, because nobody's going to be able to hear you, Bill?
I'll try.
Well, you can.
I want to show you first, and I'll come back and explain.
Okay.
Right? So, that's the easement. There's a cartway, whatever, along there, which. That's along the borderline of 815, not of the, where the boat storage is.
However, on the plan that was presented, if I might, Mr. Chairman, the plan that was presented and approved by this Board for 809 did show an easement along that easterly property line of 809.
That was there when we bought the property, and I'm not sure what the actual use, or the actual benefit of it is.
It really is, it's a civil matter, quite frankly. They can't block somebody's access. So if the access is now through the actual boat storage parking, you know, and is redefined, you know, but just bringing that up in case there's an issue. But, I mean, it doesn't have a lot to do with this Board, but we can't.
It hasn't used at all at this point.
Okay. Members of the Board, go ahead.
Are they under a parking space now?
They are under parking space now. The Board already approved it. They are located, if you look up here in this area, right.
The tanks themselves are not H-20, and they're not under the parking area at all. The leach field itself is all H-20 for the plan.
It's a conversation, then, that needs to be had with the Board of Health?
There's no, there's no non-H-20 tanks under the parking area. And all, the new proposed parking on the, on the west side of the building does not, the septic's on the east side of the building, so it's, wouldn't, yeah.
Yeah.
No issue there at all.
I was kind of surprised they brought it up at this time, because it wasn't brought up at the first hearing, so just provide, for you, the comments made by other departments.
I understand. Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Chairman, through you, is it, can you outline what we approved last time for parking on the west side? We can, or if you have it from previous?
Actually, on the west side, there was, oh, on the previous boat storage?
Correct.
Give me a second, I can.
Okay, perfect. Just so we get an idea of what is actually changing from what we previously approved.
We're being six spots to the, to the 809 property on the west.
So those, part of our plan approval a couple of months ago, or whenever it was, did not include any parking on the west side? It was all just boat storage and the food truck?
No, there was, there was parking.
There was parking for the food truck.
Here?
September 8th, I believe. Eight or nine?
10th.
Yeah, there was, there was parking, there were six or seven spots approved on the west side on the 809 lot. All we're doing is we're adding, because of the change of use at 815, we need to add six spots to the total footprint, and those six spots are located on the adjacent property at 809 for the change of use at 815.
There we go.
There it is. So that's what was approved back on the 10th of September.
So the food truck is moved up toward 28?
Yep.
Got it.
Yeah. And so that was the, the parking for the food truck, and then that was the parking for the.
Boats.
The boats. And actually, one of the advantages is the paved area will now be smaller because of the relocation of the food truck.
Basically, we've sacrificed boat storage for parking for the tenant. Correct, yeah.
The new parking spaces, one and two, just aren't numbered?
Can't do both.
Back to that one.
I can't do both.
I think that, yeah, I'm not sure.
The ones adjacent to number three?
What was your question? I'm sorry.
I said there are only, it said he's adding six spaces, but there's only four spaces shown by number.
Three, four, five, six, right.
I'm assuming that two of them, just the numbers got erased or never got put in?
Possibly, yes.
Well, actually, none of them got numbered, quite frankly.
Well, there's three, four, five, and six are numbered.
There's, on the new plan, you've got, you've got the handicap space, you've got space one, two, three, four, five, six.
Oh, am I looking?
Yeah, you've got, there are two plans, right? So.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong one.
Trying to line up my reading.
Yeah, there's two.
There's one angle, it's a little bit.
It's a little off.
It, it, yeah. Because spaces three through six are going to be used for the office space, and then spaces, the handicap space, space one, seven through 12 will be used for the food truck.
The accessible space.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. You're right.
Handicap's a bad word.
I know.
We'll get to you. Go ahead, Ben.
Three, four, five, and six are the, on, on 809 are the ones that are reserved for 815.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
And other, I had one other question. The food truck. I'm missing the food truck. So.
It's between the accessible space and Route 28.
But the food, and the food truck is on 809?
Yes.
So if I'm looking at.
It's probably a, it's not going to be in what you're looking at there. You need to pull your eight, your.
I've got the eight, I've got the two 809s. So I'm looking at the three, four, five, and six are still the three, four, five, and six on 809, on, on the second, the fast food takeout plan, correct?
Those are consistent.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, I'm good for now.
Go ahead.
And the one and two are newly proposed.
Well, the, this, this, this is all basically newly proposed, because originally it was going to be more centered, so now it's over on the eastern side of the property, northeast corner.
So the original approval back in September had parking spaces allocated on the west side that we're speaking about now to support the food truck, correct?
Correct.
So, once summer's gone, or, once the boats are gone, the space needed, because the additional spaces now that we're adding are for the newly proposed office use?
Correct.
So the food truck spaces that are, will be required for the food truck are now any one of these seven through 12s? That's a question.
Correct. Yes.
Big spaces.
So, follow-up, if I may?
Go ahead.
It's one and two, and seven through 12 for the food truck, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Because it's only, it's only the four spaces, three, four, five, and six?
Yes.
That are for any other building?
Permanently, right.
Okay. So that, so that leaves you with, what?
Eight food truck spaces.
Eight spaces.
Right.
Which is one more than they actually need.
Than they need, okay.
And then the boat storage has altered as a result.
With respect to the food truck, it's gonna, it's gonna stay there, and people will drive in and, and do business there, buy a sandwich or whatever?
That's the plan. So technically, per the, the previous meeting, in the health department, the food truck has to leave every night and go to the mothership, so to say, at the restaurant that serviced that.
My understanding, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, but in the summertime months, that would be there during the day, or whatever the hours were, I forget now. But, yeah, so it'd stay there during the day, it would leave at night, and reallocate itself, and then return the next day.
Where's it go?
So the food, so based on the health department, standing up, the health department dictates this, it has to be serviced by a commercial kitchen. So a restaurant or a commercial kitchen somewhere that would actually can support the actual, the food.
A food truck has to be housed on the property in which the commercial kitchen, it's associated with, has, it has to be there overnight.
So the folks up in the center of town, Cape.
Seagrove.
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 Yeah.
Theirs is parked, that's why theirs is parked here.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I just, my question was, walkway that we see here, was this part of the prior design?
No.
Okay, so this is, that's just like an innovation that just simply.
Well, I asked, in my comments, I said, how do the people, employees get from there to here? So, that's.
But that's not gonna, okay.
Yeah.
That settles that. That's my only question.
Yes?
I recall on the, we had a discussion about picnic tables with the food truck plan originally, and I don't see picnic tables, or am I blind? Are you, picnic tables now?
I didn't want to forego them for that purpose, but for some reason it was missed in the transition, the new plan, so I think that the whole contention last time was that there's no table service there at all.
Right.
But you could actually have a picnic table to sit and have your meal at.
Well, because I think that's our whole discussion, that convenience was okay, but it wasn't for service.
The picnic tables were right here, and there's still room there for those picnic tables.
Okay. So is there any problem that they're not marked on the plan?
I don't believe so, but if the Board, you know, wants to, actually, the Board can clarify that the picnic tables may be allowed in the original location per the plans for 2000. I'm getting confused now.
Join tables?
Put it in the decision, then we don't have to redo the plan.
2019-33 is the, was the, is the approved use, special permit and the plan. So you can say.
So we can have. That the picnic tables.
Shall remain as shown on.
That they were in the original decision.
Yeah.
There will be picnic tables, and they will, yeah, okay.
They're allowed.
If we were silent on that, wouldn't they have to remain? Because that's still an effect.
I believe, I believe that they would.
But I, best to.
Belt and suspenders.
That's exactly. Okay, anybody else on the Board? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I went by recently, it appeared to me that there's some boat storage there now, and most of the boats that I saw looked to be on the grass near to what appears to be the back of the property.
Correct.
On that side.
Yes.
And was that part of the original proposal that we approved back in September? And I guess I, as a follow-up or follow-on to that, you mentioned the, this new plan reduces the pea stone, or whatever, and makes for more grass?
Actually, it reduces the area of the pavement.
Okay.
For the, where the accessible spot is and where the food truck will be located.
And basically, it would be, if we thought he wasn't complying with the other order, then we'd have our.
Additionally, they are required, let me go to the, they are required based on the original application to put a split rail fence in along here.
On the zoning line.
Right on the zoning line. So they still need to do that.
They're in front of the fence, between the fence and Route 28.
Yep.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard, or wishes to make comment? Yes, ma'am, would you come to the microphone and tell us your name and address and whatever you have to say?
Yes, Jacqueline Edston, and I live diagonally opposite the subject property. And thank you for whomever has now required a certified mail, because even though I'm well within the 300-foot notification area, this is the first time I have ever received a notice of hearings on this property. And I did go into the zoning board appeals office and ask them why I wasn't getting noticed, because I was aware of one hearing, and I went to it and supported this application. And my name was on the list to be notified, but somehow the notification was never mailed, never received, which is unfortunate. But requiring certified mail should stop that particular problem. My concerns here are really technical and from the past, and I have a letter, I will get it copied for your files, it's the only copy I have right now, and it dates from 1988, when an approval not required plan was submitted for the property of 809, 815. At that time, it was one lot, which met over, had more than, slightly more than one acre in size, and it had the, the dive shop property and the, the main front building as well at that time. The property was divided, and it was, in doing so, it created zoning violations on the property 815, because there are setbacks violations from the lot line, and there are area violations. Those lots never met the zoning requirements. The owners at that time said there was no violation, because they intended to keep the prob, the two lots in the same ownership, and they clearly later didn't. So I think today, what I'd like to see is some firm stitching together of those two lots, so that what is permitted on 815 is, and the parking on 809, that those properties be retained in the same ownership. I mean, ideally, I think they should be put back together with an A&R plan, but, so I think the condition of keeping them together is important. As far as the proposed uses that you have this evening to put in professional office use, I'm fully in favor of that. In fact, I think it's a lot more practical than furniture sales, which requires a lot of traffic, big trucks too, not little ones. And so, office use, much more suitable. And, what else did you have? And I'm in favor of using the other lot for the additional parking. The parking on that one lot, on the developed, extremely tight. And we were aware of that at the time. And you do need to keep that access to the, on the east property line open, because it serves several houses, not just one, several.
Given, given your choice, to have, there was a swimming pool, as I recall, and so forth and so on, and this use.
Yep. It's a much better use, and I, it came before you once before, even though I wasn't notified and was in favor of it. I'm in favor of the office uses now.
Okay, sure.
But I'd like to see, I'd have more intense development of 809 in addition to what's already there. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience who wishes to be heard? Okay. Need to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing PB 2019-39.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. So, passed.
So, on the matter of PB 2019-39, I move that we adopt the following findings of fact. One, that the property is located within the C-H-1 zoning district. Two, the changes in the plan are not significantly different from the previously approved plan. Three, there is an existing cartway on the easterly side of the property that serves one dwelling. The parking as proposed would not inhibit access to and from this property. Four, the waivers requested do not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of this bylaw. Five, the parking calculations are based on the use being a professional office use with the associated storage. Six, the commercial area remains consistent with the required 33% of the floor area of the building or buildings, and it is located at the front of the building facing the street and shall be located on the ground level. Seven, with the shared parking on the adjacent property, 809 Route 28, the parking complies with the requirements of Article 9 Off-Streets Parking Regulations. And eight, screening of the parking complies with the provisions of Section 325-43.
Wait a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, those findings of fact are adopted. You have another?
So I move that we approve with conditions, case number PB 2019-39, for Brian Langelia trustees at all, as owners pursuant to the code of the Town of Howard's.
Mary, I'm going to interrupt you for a minute. Is your name Brian, or B-R-A-I-N?
It's not Brian.
Oh, God. Sorry about that.
Consistently misspelled and mispronounced.
That's all I wanted, I apologize.
Spell check.
Oh, spell check didn't catch it.
It's Brian Langelia.
Okay, please continue.
Hey, I at least know how to say his last name. Said that right. I just can't.
So I move, so let's just resume what I just said, say I move that we approve with conditions, case number PB 2019-39, for Brian Langelia trustees at all, as owners pursuant to the code of the Town of Howard's, Section 325-55, to amend/modify a site plan review special permit PB 2019-12, with waivers to change the use from a retail showroom of large items to professional office space and change the parking for property located at.
at 815 Route 28, map 24 parcel W 6-2 in the C-H-1 zoning district. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich and the following conditions. One, all signage shall comply with the sign code and building department requirements. Two, all conditions and waivers imposed pursuant to PB 2019-12 shall be met. Three, in the event that this property changes ownership, an easement will be required to allow for the shared parking between 809 and 815 Route 28. Four, this decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Five, conformance with all review procedures... Procedure requirements outlined pursuant to Section 400-18.G inspection, certificate of completion, and as-built plan of the Code of the Town of Harwich shall be met.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay.
So...
Takes care of the...
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, huh?
Before you close, do you want to discuss the additional condition regarding the picnic tables? Or...
So my... Through the chair to you, my suggestion would just be that we add a finding of fact that states that the picnic tables, as detailed on the original decision, are still allowable in the same location. And add that to the conditions as well.
The picnic tables as shown...
She moved to amend, is what she...
No, I haven't...
No, no, no. We're having discussion first.
Oh, you didn't do it on the next one?
The picnic tables as shown on the...
Should we do it on forty?
On the plans for the decision of PB 2019-33.
Great. I'm rating something different than what you just said. Sorry. I was gonna... The picnic tables as shown on the approved plan pursuant to...
It was 2019-33, if I may through the chair to Mr. Crowell. That was the...
Yeah.
The correct one.
That's the right number.
Yep. Shall be located in the same location.
Mary, it's a condition. Doesn't it have to be in the permit?
Well, it'd have to be in the... It'd have to be in the findings too, I would think.
We'll say where they are and then...
Yeah, so it can be an addition... It can be a finding of fact.
We can find that the picnic...
And it can also be a condition.
The picnic tables are still... Are still...
A viable...
Permissible in the original location
Right.
For the plan.
So I have...
As they don't interfere with the revised parking on the current plan.
Yeah.
You're gonna plug that in someplace?
I have... What I have is the picnic tables as shown... That's why I wanted to do this before you closed the hearing. The picnic table is shown on the original approved plan pursuant to case number 2019-33, shall be located in the same location.
Okay, so that's an amendment to our finding and...
It's an additional fact.
To an additional finding of fact in PB 2019-39.
No, forty.
Forty.
So if I may... If I may through the... We're doing that now, though.
We're doing that.
We're just closing the public hearing, so...
Okay.
Through you to Mr. Crowell.
Go ahead.
Are you agreeable if we say that and say that the... As the location does not interfere with the parking on the new... On the new plan? Does that make sense?
Yes.
So I think is that... We didn't... We don't have a second on the motion yet, right?
There's no motion. You haven't closed the hearing yet. This was just a discussion on the wording before we closed the hearing and then got into...
It's on forty.
On forty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion in the public hearing on...
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Okay.
So I move that we adopt the following findings of fact. One, the property is located within the C-H-1 zoning district. Two, the plan are not significantly different from the previously approved plan. Three, with the shared parking from the adjacent property, 809 Route 28, the parking complies with the requirements of Article 9 Off-Streets Parking.
Actually, that...
It should read 815, correct?
It doesn't even... That doesn't even need to be there.
Which... Which are you talking about?
Proposed finding number three does not need to be there.
Well, I'd argue that it should say 815.
Then do 815.
Okay, so I'd like to amend number three, that with the shared parking from the adjacent property, 815 Route 28, the parking complies with the requirements of Article 9 Off-Streets Parking Regulations.
Okay.
And do you want to do four?
The picnic tables as shown on the original approved plan for PB 2019... For the decision for PB 2019-13 shall be located in the same location and do not interfere with the parking on the proposed plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. We vote to adopt the findings.
So I move that we approve with conditions case number PB 2019-40, Brian Langelia, trustees at all, as owners pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-55, to amend a site plan review special permit PB 2019-33 with waivers to reconfigure the existing parking areas and to allow for the shared parking with the abutting property at 815 Route 28. The property is located at 809 Route 28, map 24 parcel W 6-1 in the C-H-D-1 zoning district. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, and the fact that boat storage use is permitted in the zoning district, and the restaurant fast food takeout use special permit has been approved. The following conditions are imposed. One, a split rail fence shall be installed along the zoning district boundary line R-M and C-H-1. Two, signage shall comply with the requirements of the Code of the Town of Harwich and the building department. Three, in the event that this property changes ownership, an easement will be required to allow for the shared parking between 809 and 815 Route 28. Four, any changes to the site plan other than those resulting from mass DOT review and approval shall be subject to further planning board review and approval. Five, all conditions and waivers imposed pursuant to PB 2019-33 shall be met. And four, any picnic...
Six.
Six. Sorry, six. Any picnic tables shown on the original plan for PB 2019-33 shall be located in the same... In the same location and do not interfere with the parking on the current application.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Matters loud.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, the next matter is Ronald Remendino and Lisa Stroker, represented by Mr. Crowell. Step right up here. We don't bite.
You need to read the notice into the record?
I will. This is PB 2019-41, Ronald M. Remendino and Lisa Stroker, owners here of William Crowell Esquire seeks approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, 325-51.L, comma, 51, comma, M, and 55, for a site plan review special permit and special permit for mixed use and village commercial overlay with waivers for the construction of an addition for retail commercial space conversion of the second floor from residential use to retail commercial use and maintaining an existing residential dwelling unit. The property is located at 521 Route 28, map 14 parcel P3-A in the CV and V-C overlay districts. Mr. Remendino and ours representative, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowell, representing Ronald Remendino, seated beside me, and his wife Lisa Stroker, who's not present, but she's a co-owner of the property in question, the two properties in question. Remendino's... I'm sorry, Mr. Remendino and Ms. Stroker have owned the property 17 years now, and they own the property that the... It's the subject of this petition this evening, as well as the so-called Sativa Building. So they have two gift shops, one on either side of the parking lot. I want to say at the outset that the town planner, Shalene Greenhouse, has been of tremendous help to us. We've met with her at length to try to simplify and clarify this situation, as well as Griffin Ryder, the town engineer, has met with us and been very, very helpful as well. So we appreciate that a lot, and she's... We've met the team of the owners, Tom Moore, who is seated behind me, designer of the building plans, and Dan Kroto from Moran Engineering, as well as Terry Warner, the surveyor. So it's been a team effort our camp as well as town hall in trying to present this as clearly as possible to you. So we're making three requests. Situation better. So you all have the existing conditions plan as well as the proposed addition plan?
Yeah, they do have that.
In the packet?
I didn't even do the existing. I just went to the proposed on there.
Right.
Assesses plan, which is fine.
No, you have the plan.
This is the
No, no.
Proposed addition plan, and then I submitted usually a copy of the assesses plan as well. Just so, in case you didn't know where Sativa and Solus are, you need to visit those shops. They're excellent. And join me and everybody else in town on Christmas Eve on December 24th.
Because we forgot to get our wife's presents.
That's correct. Stocking, stuffers, everything. So, as you know, it's a popular destination and well-traveled with foot traffic on Route 28, especially in the summertime. So we're seeking a mixed-use development because there's some residential aspect to the building in question, which is the Solus building on the plan known as 521. And also seeking an addition that's shown on the plan as the proposed addition, approximately 19 feet by 23 and a half feet. That will go up to the second floor. So as far as the mixed-use development, as you know, we have to have part commercial, and that part, which is the Solus gift shop, has to face Route 28, has to be on the ground level, which it is, and it has to constitute at least 33% of the floor area, and it constitutes 81.5% of the floor area. So it easily meets the criteria for the mixed-use development. The residential unit located to the rear of the property, because it's in a commercial overlay district, has to have at least 5,000 square feet of area per residential unit. We have almost 12,000 square feet of area on the lot, so we easily meet that criteria for one residential unit, and that's located to the rear of the property.
Against the back property line, Miss Crowell? I don't mean... I apologize for interrupting, but
It's right here.
This is the building against the... It looks like a commercial building against the back property.
Yes, yes. It's where it says flagstone patio. Yeah, that's it right there. And here, yeah, this area here.
And that's used as residential?
That's one residential unit, correct.
Can you do that again, please?
It's not on the patio, but it's adjacent to the patio, right there. Right there, yeah. So that's the mixed-use, commercial and residential that we're seeking. The parking area is grandfathered for 12 spaces. As you know from driving through town many times, that parking lot has been there for quite some time, and we have 12 spaces shown on the plan that meet the requirements for the size parking spaces for that property. They are requesting the petition... Petitions are requesting a waiver for six spaces. The proposed addition would require 18, so they're asking a waiver of six. And again, much of the customer base for the gift shop is walking traffic, pedestrian traffic in... On Route 28, so that there isn't that much in and out, except, as I said, on December 24th, there isn't that much traffic in and out. Has not been an issue. And you'll note in the comments that the police and fire have no issues with the parking area. We're also seeking a site plan review special permit with waivers, and Mr. Moran... I'm sorry, Mr. Kroto from Moran Engineering has provided correspondence to you dated October 15th that outlines the 10 waivers that are requested. Say, well, 10. My comment to that would be, this is an established business. It's not like we're coming in and saying we want to locate a brand-new business. This has been there for a long time. It's worked. We're hoping the board is going to be user-friendly, business-friendly, and work with the owners here to allow the construction of the addition. The owners are delegating some of the management of the gift shop operation to their daughter, who's doing a very good job and is younger and enthusiastic. Ron's been in the...
She is.
In the business for... In the retail business now for over 40 years, so he's in the business, and they've taught their daughter well to assist with the operation of the businesses and the management of the property. So the waivers are basically to allow what already exists. They've done on their own beautiful landscaping on Route 28 without the planning board saying, "You have to do this." They've created islands, and you see the gardener there constantly during the summer, and there's flowers and so forth. It's all very, very nicely landscaped and taken care of. The lighting, they've had no issues with septic or drainage, anything of that nature. So we're saying, look, we're really just adding an addition on the second floor and taking out what's existing retail use... I'm sorry, residential use on the floor and removing bedrooms on the second floor and making that into retail, commercial space, and storage space as shown on the plans. So that's the reason for all the waivers, is to basically allow everything to stay with the addition added. Thirdly, they're seeking a special permit in the village commercial overlay district for the addition. As I mentioned, three existing bedrooms and a bathroom on the second floor will be removed to create additional retail slash storage. And the setback requirement in the overlay district is 10 feet. You can see the corner of the building, of the Solus building, that in the northeast corner is presently 9.6 feet. So the addition further down is showing as 10.1 at its closest point, but it's not closer than the northeast corner, so they're not creating any new non-conformity. They're staying along the existing setback of... They're staying along the existing setback of the existing building. So in seeking the special permit for this addition, this board has the authority to make a finding that the addition will not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of the bylaw and could be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood or overall public good. And I would submit that this addition will enhance the neighborhood and the values of properties, neighboring properties, and be a further complement to the existing retail shops that the, the owners have on this property and the adjoining property, and would ask that you grant the special permit tonight, as well as the waivers concerning the site plan, and allow for a special permit for a mixed-use development. Thank you.
Okay. Could we hear from the town planner, please?
Absolutely, and thank you for the compliment. It's not often that town employees receive compliments. So that was very nice. Thank you.
Welcome.
So the applicant has requested a number of waivers. I'm not going to run through those unless the board would like me to. With regard to other comments, police and fire had no concerns. Health indicated that the septic system is sized to handle the additional flow of the expanded retail use. Prior to approval of the building permit application, Title V inspection is required to ensure it is working properly and can handle the added flow. Should the system fail, the inspection of fully compliant system will be required. The town engineer and I did meet with the applicant, and we did make recommendations and comments to them before they made application. Once the plans were received, the town engineer and I sat down on October 23rd, and at that time, we found the plans, information, waivers, requested an application to be in order. We have no concerns or comments relative to this application or the requested waivers. And at this time, we do just, excuse me, recommend that standard conditions be imposed.
You said the town engineer. Does the town engineer physically go out and walk these properties? I know you do, but...
Um, sometime, I mean, sometimes I just look on Google Map to be, and to be honest, that he needs to go and look at them. He does. I'm pretty sure he did go down and look at this at the time that we were in conversation with the applicant.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Members of the board. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, through you, on the, I'm looking at the plan of land showing the proposed addition. It looks to me like there are, along the west side of the...
Craig, excuse me? Is this the plan you look?
No, this is part of the package.
Oh, okay. I have that one too, yeah.
It's the one up on the screen.
Thank you. I apologize for interrupting.
No problem. I believe they're called wheel stops.
Yes.
Looks to me that there are one, two, three, four wheel stops located there, although there is no indication that those are parking spots, spaces, because it looks like I count a total of twelve, and you're requesting a waiver of six, if I'm understanding correctly.
Um, I'm, I'm not quite understanding you. There's one, there's seven, six, five, four.
Wheel stop, wheel stop, wheel stop.
Oh, on the east side. You said the west side. Sorry. Okay.
West side of...
I kept looking at the other side going, what?
West side of the easternmost building. Sorry.
I can't speak to those. It may be that they're there so that people don't...
When they back up.
When they back up.
Do cars park there now? I've been by a couple times in the summer, and it looks like there's cars parked there. And I, so that begs the question, how much space is there between the parking spaces that are currently numbered on the proposed plan and those four wheel stops?
Sure.
And is that the waiver that's being requested, number seven for thirty-two, 325-41K, typical parking layout dimensions? Is that why that is being requested, because there's enough, if two cars back out? I don't know what the...
Dan Crotto's behind you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may Mr. Crotto from Moran Engineering answer that question?
Sure, go ahead. I think I can help with that, and there are currently, the surveyor, Terry Warner, picked up out there, and there are currently wheel stops there. I think in, in extreme circumstances, people probably do park there. Are they legal spots that meet all the require, are they legal, that meet all the requirements? No. When this came up, because the, because the parking lot's so tight, when we spoke about this, the idea was not to remove those, because if anything, they, they would protect the building from people backing up. So I think Ron may be able to even talk about what happens during heavy flow, but it's, whatever happens works, correct or not?
Those, those feet from the building as well.
Five feet from the building, so they're not, they don't meet the town's, all the dimensional requirements, or they weren't part of our parking, our twelve parking spot layouts.
Correct. And, and the reason I ask it, because there is a request for a waiver of six, and there looks like there's one, two, three, four wheel stop, stops now, but...
There's two more down beyond it, though. Out toward the street, see them?
Yeah, but those are numbered.
I don't think, because of the lack of the dimensional requirements, all the requirements, we didn't want to go that method of, of making these, these permanent approved spots.
Wouldn't need the waiver. Understood.
So we're trying to, yeah, so we're getting the waiver for less using the town parking and the, all the local summer crowd that's walking around. We thought that was the best to go. One improvement that this plan does provide is, it does provide the handicap parking spot and the ramp to get into the building, which I think is a large improvement over what's there now.
Should those four wheel stops not regulation spaces, but apparently do get used now, especially in the summer, as spaces, should they be labeled, no parking allowed? If there's a concern that they, that they are used, and as you just described, not making them permanent spaces or a part of this request for the reasons you explained, should they be labeled, no parking allowed, in those four areas?
You have something to offer?
Yes. With all due respect, I don't see the purpose that that would serve. The, Mr. Remendino says he's never had any issues with anybody backing into anyone, and they, they, if there is some overflow, as Mr. Crotto said, in extreme conditions, they, they serve a purpose, but they're not supposed to be used as parking spaces.
Spaces are not lined, are they?
They're not, and it's a stone.
To gravel.
Parking.
Put it to stop the car.
I think it's an existence, situation, and I, we weren't looking to change the existing, except we were looking, as moving forward, to show what formerly does meet the town requirements.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, those parking stops are to protect the building, the Solus building.
I understand. So people aren't going to the building.
Yes.
I understand. I just said to somebody on the board, I'd probably go buy this at least once a day, every day of my life. Okay. Is there anybody else on the board who has any questions or comments? Okay. Anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard or testify? Sir? No, you're done. Okay. Okay, give me a second. Did I get a motion to close the public hearing?
We'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So I move that we vote to approve the following waivers based on the facts presented by the applicant. One, to allow a lot size of eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy, ninety-seven square feet, where fifteen thousand square feet is required for the village commercial overlay district. Two, section 325-43.B, existing parking layout does not allow space for planting bordering trees. Three, three, section 325-51.M subsection four, existing site layout does not provide space for outdoor landscaped public area. Residential unit has an existing outdoor lawn yard. Four, to provide a separate landscaping plan. Five, specifications for lighting, curbing, et cetera, existing lighting, curbing, et cetera, is to remain, with the exception of the proposed handicap ramp and handicapped parking spot. Six, underground site utilities, utilities are existing and no changes are proposed. Overhead utilities are shown. Seven, section 325-41.K, typical parking layout dimensions. Eight, drainage calculations and map for the existing impervious surfaces. Drainage calculations and a drainage system design are provided for the proposed new roof area and a portion of the existing roof area. Nine, soil test hole requirement for the proposed drainage related to the addition. And ten, six parking spaces associated with the proposed addition alteration.
Wait a second.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the vote on the waivers is approved.
So I move that we vote to adopt the following findings of fact.
Second.
One, that the property is located within the C-B zoning district and the village commercial overlay district. Two, parking for the proposed expanded use has been satisfied with the requested waiver. Three, patrons of this building will be primarily pedestrians. Four, the waivers requested did not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of this spot. Five, the commercial area makes up more than the required thirty-three percent of the floor area of the building or buildings, and it is located in the front of the building facing the street and shall be located on the ground level. And six, there is required a minimum of ten thousand square feet of lot for the residential unit.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Just, I raised the point during my presentation. I believe the requirement in the village overlay district is only five thousand square feet. Doesn't really matter, we meet the ten thousand square foot requirement, but to be accurate, I think it's five thousand, but I...
So you're looking at number six of our vote?
Yes. I would defer to the town planner if she disagrees.
I honestly don't know. Have it handy.
I think we'll leave it, we'll leave it the way it is.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman. We, we meet the requirement.
Do I, we have a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And finally?
I move that we vote...
Not finally, two more.
...to approve with conditions, case number PB 2019-41, for Ronald M. Remendino and Lisa Stroker pursuant to the Code of the Towne-Harwich, section 325-51.M, for special permit for mixed use for the construction of an existing residential dwelling unit for property located at 521 Route 28, map fourteen parcel P3-A, in the CB and V-C overlay districts. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact, and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Towne-Harwich.
Second.
The following conditions are...
I didn't have any for the mixed use.
Okay. So...
Do you want to amend that by...
Then I will amend that to say to approve case number 2019-41.
With no...
With no conditions.
With no conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in...
Aye.
Sorry about that, folks. And I move that we approve with conditions case number PB 2019-41, Ronald M. Remendino and Lisa Stroker, owners care of William Kroll Esquire pursuant to the Code of the Towne-Harwich, section 325-51.L and 325-55, for a special permit for the village commercial overlay district addition for retail, commercial space, conversion of the second floor from residential use to retail, and maintaining an existing residential dwelling unit for property located at 521 Route 28, map fourteen parcel P3-A, in the CB and V-C overlay districts. The decision is based on the aforementioned finding of fact, findings of fact, and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Towne-Harwich, and the following conditions. A, all signage shall comply with the sign code and building department requirements. B, outdoor lighting shall comply with Article 21. C, all health department conditions shall be met. D, any changes to the special permit uses or the site plan may require further site plan review by the planning board. E, this decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registered Deeds. And F, conformance with all review procedure requirements outlined pursuant to section 400-18.G, inspection, certificate of completion, and as-built plan of the Code of the Towne-Harwich shall be met.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we're done.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
We got through all the legislative committees and Senate hearings, and we're able to get here, so...
And tomorrow night.
And tomorrow night. You tomorrow night.
Okay, just give me a minute till I shuffle through my paperwork.
That started in May, Mr. Chairman, just so you know, what it takes behind the scenes, like complicated drawings.
It was very involved, I agree. On the other hand, as far as I'm concerned, it's this kind of applicant that this board is here. Longtime businessperson.
Right, exactly. Right, proven to act right.
That's why staff worked very hard, not that we don't work very hard with all applicants, but it's like, all right, let's get this right.
Okay, Littlefield Pond, you all have a copy of the correspondence, or am I the only one that has it? If I am, I'll read it.
No, I think we got it.
We all have it.
I think it's Charlene's, is it?
Yeah, it's my memo.
It's Charlene's, my one.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments on the Littlefield Pond Road release of surety?
Charlie, you're okay with it?
Um, I am okay with releasing all but $2,000. There's still some remaining looming and seeding that needs to be done. Obviously, this is not the time of year to be doing that. The town engineer did receive a revised as-built plan, showing that all bounds had been installed and all, all that information. So at this time, staff's recommendation is to release $13,000 of the cash surety.
They have a total of fifteen?
I'm sorry, total of fifteen, yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the release of $13,000 of the cash surety held for Littlefield, Littlefield Pond Road.
Do you have a second down there?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Excuse me, can we get a chance to comment on the question list?
It really isn't on our agenda.
It's not a public hearing, it's a public meeting, it's entirely up to the board.
You want to comment, come up and comment. Crap, we're not going to start at this stage in the game.
I don't know if I can do any good now.
My name is Richard DiAmbrosio, thirteen Littlefield Pond Road. The developer built my house, and I have a lot of questions concerning things that he has to do. And right now, there are two constructions going on. One is halfway complete, the other, over the weekend, a foundation was dug. His track record is not completing things that he's supposed to complete. Having this bond is something that forces him to do certain things. When this is not here, there's nothing to control this guy, and he's done that in the past, he's just walked away from things.
Who's the builder?
HPH Associates.
Who is it?
Mark Giaruso.
Okay.
He's had all kinds of problems with the town. You can ask the building inspector, the tax collector, all kinds of problems.
That's, none of that is before us.
There's an island at the end of the cul-de-sac that needs to be completed. There's a couple of small piles of construction material from old construction that has to be taken care of. He's supposed to take care of plantings of trees and berms on the end of the property. He hasn't done that.
None of those things are, are on our agenda this evening or before us. Basically, it's, it's your dispute with your builder, and you're going to have to pursue them. And you're going to have to pursue them.
Well, I mean, I.
This board, this board doesn't have anything before it that can address those matters. And, and, and will not, I don't, I don't.
Can we ask Charlene? This is strictly having to do with the construction of the road and those requirements. If there are other things that he completed, that's a civil matter between you and him, the town really cannot get involved in, in that beyond what we have jurisdiction over, whether it's this board or the building department or, or whomever.
And frankly, I don't think we're in a position to release this surety, based on what I'm reporting.
Right.
Yes. Not that we don't sympathize with you, it's just.
You have your problems, but that isn't.
Plus, it's not all my problems, it's the neighborhood's problem.
I understand. That's between your neighbors and, and, and the builder.
I appreciate you listening to me.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the release?
We already did.
Okay, done. Thank you. Okay. This deals with the Bascom Hollow subdivision. We have a memorandum that the applicant has requested that Bascom Hollow Road be plowed for the two twenty season. Town engineering, Griffin Rider and I have reviewed and discussed this request at this time, and based on four hundred dash fourteen R of the subdivision rules and regulations, we cannot support this request. Four hundred dash fourteen point R states that, quote, roadway maintenance, if released, if released from restrictions with regard to sale of lots of buildings on lots by the posting of a performance bond or other security, the applicant shall maintain the roadway for vehicle trap, vehicular traffic in a manner satisfactory to the board. Further, the applicant shall maintain the roadway in a subdivision in a condition that meets all the above requirements to the satisfaction of the board, either until acceptance of the way by a vote of the town or for a special, or for a period of one year from the date of release. And my, my memorandum tells me that three lots are still under the planning board covenant. And further, that Mr. Nickerson from the Department of Public Works has provided a memo indicating that they do not have an issue with this request based on the DPW policy. However, this is not consistent with the subdivision rules and regulations. Okay, would you like to be heard, sir?
Chairman McParland, my name is Bill Marsh, and greetings to Harwich Planning Board and the Honorable Charlene. Well, I hear, heard you're leaving us and. Anyhow, we're trying to get a road plowed, and I have Susan Ledoux, to give credit where credit is due, could not be here tonight, and so she gave me a little cheat sheet that I passed around. And in my plea to you tonight, I wish to remind you, and I think you already know about a lot of this stuff, but we can't, we can't even request, we're kind of going to catch twenty-two, and we can't even request a release of the covenant of the lots, even the road is, even though the road is completely done, other than the sidewalks, which I'll speak to in a minute, until the, as a Board of Health regulation on the approval of this eight-lot subdivision, they said to us, well, we'll let you have four lots released to be able to build on, and we, we don't want you to, to build the denitrification community septic system. We want you just to do a standard system with the sewer pipe in the road, which we have done. And because the sewer on Route, new sewer on Route thirty-nine is going to be installed in two years, this was as of the date of the approval of the subdivision, we want to, we don't want you to waste money and put in this denitrification system because we're in the Pleasant Bay watershed area on Route thirty-nine there, and we want you to hook in directly to the pipe for the town sewer, which of course is what we'd like to do. So we're not even able to get any more lot releases than the four that were dictated by the Board of Health, such that we can come before you and request this. So I just see it as a catch twenty-two. We've built the road in, in accordance with all of the construction standards, everything's been approved, everything's been looked at. I don't know if any of you have been down there, but it looks great down there, we've done a nice job, we've done a nice job on three houses that are built that are occupied by people that bought these houses, and, and we're concerned for the winter ahead. The sidewalk, which the town might, or Charlene might have a little bit of an issue with, I don't understand, but our process, and we've done this before with you and other subdivisions, is we, we construct and complete the sidewalk in front of these lots at the same time that we do the driveway. If we were to just go in and put the sidewalk in when the road's being built, before the houses are built, all we would be doing is cutting up the sidewalk wherever the driveway decides to go, we would be having to alter grades because we really don't know where the driveway is going to be and the house is going to be and what the grades are going to be and all of that. So the much better job is to complete the sidewalks as the houses are built, which is what we've done, and we've done that, adopted that as a practice, and we have not had any resistance or objection from the town in the other subdivisions that we have completed. We can get down through this, but basically, everything is done there. There, there are some bounds that are required at points of curvature, and we, and the driveways have been constructed in those areas, so we have put what I understand to be defined as a PK. Charlene, I don't even know what PK stands for, but it's an engineer for a tack that the engineers put in the pavement because they can't put the bound in the pavement. Or we'd all object to a bound in the pavement when a PK serves just fine. And those are not on the points of the lot corners, those are on what's called the point of curvature, which is one of your requirements from the planning board, from the requirements. So we do that. And I talked about the sidewalk, talked about the as-built, the as-built plan is, is, is going to be prepared and finalized after the sidewalk's done. And I would like to bring to your attention some calculations that we did today, and now we're, the, the individual three houses that we have built and sold and are occupied, and the remaining lots come to a total contribution to the town annual taxes of over thirty-four thousand. So we're going to, and we're going to start another house in there, the fourth house will be started on Lot Six, right around the first of the year. And we'd like to have access for any construction problems we have, emergency vehicles. The customers that we have built and sold houses to, they're going to be living in these houses, we'd like to be able to have the town plow the street.
Planning Director, tell me where we're at.
I believe the memo of November twelfth speaks for itself. A few specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
My question is, in other words, this applicant wants us to direct that the matter?
He's asking that the road be allowed to be plowed.
Allowed to be plowed or be plowed?
The town plowed law.
The town plowed.
That's my question, yeah.
Yeah.
The town would.
They want the town to plow the road.
And we would have to make a finding with respect to that?
You would have to give your blessing to do that. According to the regulations, your rules and regulations, I don't believe that is.
That we can?
I don't believe you can, I don't believe you should.
Okay, I, I'm not worried about whether should, that's my question, go ahead, Mary. I'll get to you.
I think we were asked the same question last year, and unfortunately, I think it's unfortunate for Mr. Marsh that his development has these requirements on it, but it's still under construction, and we, my understanding is we require all developers to plow the roads until they're either accepted or, or completed, and unfortunately not.
The road is not under construction.
We'll get to you in a second.
Not even close.
Sit down for a minute.
But the, the subdivision is not completed yet, and the sidewalks aren't completed, and it, it just, it, it seems like it's contrary to our own rules and regulations, and our town planner and our town engineer have recommended against it.
Okay, go ahead.
Is, is the regulations that all lots have to be completed and occupied and the road completed?
No, it's that all lots have to be released from covenant, the as-built plan has to be approved, and it, the road needs to be signed off.
Okay, but he can't do that because of the sewer, which is something beyond his control, is that correct?
That's not exactly my understanding, it was their decision to hold back on building lots, they could have built a community septic system.
When you say their decision, you mean the developers?
The developers, they could have built a community septic system on Lot One to hold them until such time as the sewer went in, is my understanding.
This is a section of town where, is, is, there's going to be sewer ring, in fact, it's supposed to be started now, isn't it?
They're.
They're doing it.
I keep getting detoured, yes.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? Go ahead, I'll get back to you, Mary.
Thank you. Mr. Marsh, you, if I understood correctly, said you're kind of in a catch twenty-two between the rules and regulations, which Charlene has spelled out here, and the Board of Health's requirements. But the Board of Health's requirements, if I understood you correctly, have been met?
Correct.
Is there any way you can go back to the Board of Health and ask for a release, or whatever the right language is?
Yeah, I can, you know what, I can do that. And, and Charlene's comment, we haven't built the community septic, couldn't be any more false or wrong. We have built a community septic system. We have put a sewer pipe in roughly a thousand feet of road, all required by the Board of Health, all done, all completed, all inspected, all signed off on. Now, what I, what I can do is go in and, and put the IA, IA components in, and then it will, it will be fully compliant with Title V, which they've asked us not to do.
Because it's going to be sewer.
So if I can.
Okay, we'll get to you.
Can I finish, please, Mary?
Yeah, let her unfinish. And we'll get to you.
The work is done. The, the road is built, the sideshow, I mean, is, if you've been down it, it is a, it's really nicely done, and the houses have been nicely done, nicely landscaped, everything. You've got people living in these houses, they would like to have, I would like to have the street plowed. We've talked to Chris Nickerson, he has zero objection to be able to, to going there and plowing the road. The, the, I mean, it's just, it's really, really difficult, and it's, it's very much a catch twenty-two. I can't move. Oh, okay, if it's denied tonight, I'll just say the heck with it, it just isn't worth the aggravation anymore. I'll go in and I'll spend the money and I'll, and I'll put the communities, the IA components of this, of the community septic in, and then the Board of Health will be satisfied, and then we'll come in and see, get all the lots released, and then, and it's, talk about a waste of time.
Okay, Mary?
So my issue has nothing to do with the Board of Health issue, it's simply the fact that you're still under covenant, and while you're still under covenant, our regulations say we, we don't release it for plowing. So that's, that's where my concern is, and we've got a recommendation from two staff.
Can we apply a little common sense? Is that able to happen?
Well, that, that is my common sense, I'll be honest with you. From my perspective, it's still, you, you're a developer.
And if it's denied, we'll just go do the, we'll go the other way, that's all. It's not worth the aggravation anymore.
Anybody else on the board? I'm sorry, go ahead.
How have other developments gone in the town? Were they all had to been completed before plowing was issued? Was there any type of regulation that the houses that were built could be plowed up to?
In any research we've done, the roads have to be released from covenant, released from surety, as-built plan accepted before the town would plow it. The DPW has a little bit different standard than the rules and regulations. Mr. Marsh is absolutely correct, DPW does not have a problem with plowing this, however, it is not consistent with your rules and regulations.
Am I misunderstanding that if we don't vote to have the town plow it?
Then it has to be plowed privately.
It'll have to plow.
Right. Which is cheaper than putting an IA system in, but that's just.
That's a damn reminder, okay. Anybody else?
Joe, we have a responsibility to build houses for.
I hear you.
And I don't know, Mr. Rouse, Rus, Rouse, Arthur, and, but the rest of, some of the folks on this board know me and know every single subdivision I have done in the Town of Harwich, and I have stood behind my name and my reputation and class job every single time. I can't predict, I can't predict what the winters are going to bring.
Regardless of who is making a recommend, a request like this, doesn't matter who the developer is, town engineer and mine would be the same.
I, I understand, I just, this particular applicant has been before us on an awful lot of things over an awful lot of years, and he makes certain representations. Do I have a motion that?
I think you have a question.
David has a question.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Other than the regulation, functionally and technically, not technically, with respect to the regulations, what's the harm?
That's not for me to say, I can only go by what your regulations are.
I understand that, I mean, it's, it's, is the only, only impact, the fact that the town will have to pay the time for the time to follow the road? Or is there a danger involved, is there a security issue involved or anything? I understand the covenant release, but I'm just wondering, from a practical standpoint, what's the harm?
If any damage is done, I don't know if the town is liable for that damage.
Could they be definitely liable for it?
I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not involved in road plowing, I don't know what the policy is.
I, I am involved with road plowing. And where I live, they come to the edge of my property line, there's two homes.
Cover your driveway.
And, no, and then I have to, then I have to have somebody privately plow my property. In other words, they won't come on my property, and, and I, and I know why. I had a little go-round with the DPW director before I finally got it through my thick Irish head, but that, that's, that's the way it is where I am, and I, and I know there are a number of places in town like that. In other words, half, I'm eight hundred feet from, from the street. The first four hundred feet, there are two other houses that are butted, okay? The town plows that four hundred feet, but they don't plow the other four hundred feet because it's under my private property. Okay, sure, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So my question is, is obviously the applicant has done all the due diligence, has shown good faith, are there any other, are there any kind of temporary measures that have ever been exercised in the past? Is there a precedent for being able to permit a kind of a bridge scenario that connects situation A where we find ourselves and situation B is the completion and sewer ring and all that? That's my, because it doesn't seem like it's an unreasonable request, however, the legalities are obvious. So it just, it's one of these, you know, there's got to be a way to turn that corner appropriately where everybody can have some sort of satisfaction. Is there any precedent? That's the question.
Seems to me, and I think I'm the longest-serving board member, seems to me we had something like this happen with Delu's Way, Cliff Delu's is his property.
And the board voted not to plow, not to allow it to be plowed, yes.
That one had to do.
Because I was here then.
Yeah, that one.
How long ago was?
That's how long ago it was.
But he's got plenty of plows.
Yeah, or not anymore, he doesn't. But, but, and my, my memory on that one is it had something to do with, with the, the covers, the, the.
There was something, but yeah, the, the.
Manhole covers weren't.
Yeah, manhole covers weren't properly washed.
The board did not, did not allow, did not.
Okay.
Excuse it.
Charlene, is this something that can solve by posting a bond?
The way the language is written, whether it's held by surety or under covenant, until those are released, the town. until those are released, the town is not... It's not supposed to be done.
So that's a no?
It's a no.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
So the... If the covenants were released, then we wouldn't even be having this conversation.
But the covenants can't be released.
They can't be released because they haven't built all the houses.
No, because of the septic sewer issue.
Right. But you, and that's why I'm going back to and sort of following on what Duncan said. I don't even know if it's a compromise, but you've met the requirements of the Board of Health for putting the pipe in the street and all of... So when it comes down Route 39, it's a simple hookup.
Just the connection is the failure.
The connection isn't there yet because the main pipe isn't in Route 39.
I mean, they'll make the connection as they go by.
Right. So could you go back to the Board of Health to get rid of... To explain to them, as we just said...
They don't make the decision.
You guys hold the covenant.
Okay.
Please don't do that. Sorry.
Well, Craig, to further explain your question. I mean, the Board of Health can't go out on a limb and go against Title V. If they were to do more releases based on the promise that the pipe goes by... What happens if the pipe never gets there? That's why they've limited us to four building lots. Let's say something happens and the pipe never goes by. Then we'll enhance the IA portion of the septic. We'll add those components, electrify it, do everything we need to do. And then we'll just build the rest of the houses and be back to see you.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead.
Is there a timeline that you're getting for the laying of the pipe?
Came for...
That you can plan on?
When we came to this planning board, we had to get Board of Health approval. At that time, they told us it would be two years. And it's as municipal projects happen, it's probably gonna be closer to three to three and a half years. So we're stopped. We can build one, then we have to wait.
Tell me again why you have to wait?
Because he didn't have enough...
Because the Board of Health won't release more than four lots to be able to be built on, out of eight.
And that's over a septic issue?
It's over a sewer issue, yes.
A septic sewer.
This board cannot release any further lots. You can change lots out like you did at the last meeting.
The way I understand, yeah, yeah. Okay. Everybody had a chance to...
This is an unusual situation. This has not been... Has not come up before because we haven't had this construction issue in schedule.
I mean, we're doing the right thing environmentally.
Well, the only thing you could have done is to build a system that would have accommodated all the lots and then transition to the sewer.
We can still do that. We can still do that. But we were told the sewer is gonna take two years. This is what the Board of Health said. We'd like to do it this way.
Okay, anybody wish to make a motion? I'll make a motion. I move that the town of Harwich be authorized to plow Bascom Hollow Road in the 2019-2020 season. Any second. Seeing none, the motion fails. Sorry, sir.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Hope so.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we have some endorsements?
You have several endorsements. The last one, the Rich 2019-34, they are actually holding back on endorsement at this time. So you do have three applications. PB 2019-29, which is the Marceline Davenport, which is endorsement of the plan along with the covenant. For PB 2019-31, which is KNT Realty Trust. It's simply endorsement of the plan. And PB 2019-32, the Pena Blute subdivision, is simply endorsement of the plan. This is all following the expiration of the 20-day appeal period. All of that has expired, and no appeals have been taken.
Okay, so, but we don't need any motions on these, do we?
You do need to move to endorse the plan and covenant as applicable.
Can they be held on at once, or do we have to hand it in?
You can say "so moved to what I just said" if you wanted.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And so we have a motion to carry out all of those items that are...
One, two, and three.
One, two, and three, as set out in the tonight's agenda under subdivision plan endorsement.
Yep. You can either take the time to do that now or at the expiration of the meeting, we can lay the plans out and you can just sign it.
Well, let's do it. Let's vote it, and then we'll do that, too. All in favor?
Aye.
All's done. You want to talk about drop boxes?
So, we are having difficulty sometime sending out your electronic applications. Plus, with the exception of one or two of you, I don't get responses that you even receive them. So what we are proposing is one of two things. And there was actually, just on the Mass Planner's List served today, a question about how do other towns do this? What a lot of other towns do, similar to like the Board of Selectmen does, is the packet goes on the website. And anybody who wants to see the packet can see the packet. We can do that. We can also institute a Dropbox, which is something you all would have to download and get access to. And then we would put the packets into that electronic Dropbox. We're trying to move away from paper. We're happy to make packets, you know, for those who still want the paper. But we are trying to get away from that. Having it available on the website means that the public can see what my staff reports say, what the applications are, what the plans are, and all of that. So just trying to streamline things a little bit. There are times, like I said, where the packets are too large to email. We've had to break them up. Some people get one piece and not another, and it's just kind of kooky.
And the large drawings are a problem.
And the large drawings are a problem.
Mary?
So I personally like the idea of uploading them on the website, like the Selectmen's packets, because then they're all there and we can always get them. And they can be archived, and we can go back to look at them if we need them. But I'm a tree hugger, except on planning board night when I like to have the papers in front of me.
And we, you know, for those who still want the paper packets, we're happy to do that. That's not a problem.
I review my electronic packet, but I just...
Yeah.
I like the paper in front of me for the night.
I need it so that I can write all of what you guys are doing on the paper.
I'd rather have this in front of me than a computer in front of me. Because it's just easier.
Especially the large drawings.
I'll second that. I completely agree with that. But the flip... The thing is, I think the efficiency factor is, for Dropbox is enormous because it's just one action.
It is one action.
Much fewer chances for like an error in a communication or miss send or whatever.
For fluffel.
Number one. Number two, it's all secure.
Yes.
Which is really a great thing. And then it's, you know, if the town's gonna actually own, if already do own one and has a public folder, it can be there indefinitely. We can have the entire year. We can go back...
It can go right on the website, too. It can go right on the website. If you look at the Board of Selectmen...
Then that means it's open. So all I'm saying is...
Well, this is all public information. There's nothing in the other side.
Yeah, there's nothing...
Okay, all right.
If there were ever an executive session item, then you'd have to do something different.
Yeah, that...
I'm not sure that it really saves much paper because unless we bring our laptops to the meeting, we gotta print it out on our dinky little printers. And that is even more expensive because we have to change cartridges all the time.
Oh, I don't expect anybody to do that. That's... Yeah, that's crazy.
That we have to bring our laptops in order to be able to see what we're dealing with during the meeting.
And we do have a member when he's here who does that.
We can do that, but it's a lot harder to change pages.
I'll do whatever you want, but I want you to be able to get it electronically because, quite frankly, there are some folks who don't get their paper packets till the night of the meeting.
Well, I don't know... I don't have that problem. I come...
Right, but you're also gonna be gone for a bit.
Yeah, then I won't come and pick them up.
Exactly. And frankly, we don't want to mail it either because that's very expensive.
We're fine mailing it in past years.
Expense.
I admit freely, I don't come and pick it up for the night.
Right. Otherwise, you lose it.
It's not even that. It's that I like a clean set for the night of the meeting.
But I also need to send it out electronically.
Yeah, so, but that's what I'm saying. Like, I can look at it on a website just as easily.
Dropbox, or I can do it on the website.
I'd say what's cheaper.
Madam Planning Director?
I need the paper.
You've heard some comment... I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't know if we're ready for a motion or not, but...
Doesn't need one.
I don't think we need a motion.
I would suggest, it sounds like we need or feel more comfortable with the paper in front of us at the meeting for the difference...
You'll still get the paper.
Right, so we'll still get that. If we don't want it, we can tell you and we can save a tree.
Right.
But I am in favor of putting it on the town of Harwich website so that everybody has access to it. If they want to print it out, they can, or if they want the paper copy, come in and get it, whatever. But it's electronically there versus the problems you encounter with email or Dropbox. Why not just put it on the website?
As far as I'm concerned, that's why we have a planning director. She'll decide what she wants to do. You've heard enough comment?
Yep.
Okay. With respect to the DCPC application?
I have copies of the decision here. It was approved by the Cape Cod Commission, as Joe and Duncan and David know because they went to the hearing. Thank you, gentlemen, for attending. There were also two Selectmen there. Mary wrote a letter, which I read into the record. So it was approved unanimously by the Cape Cod Commission members. So that was exciting. This is now being referred to the Assembly of Delegates. And the Commission staff was hoping, anticipating that this is gonna be on December 4. We do not know that for sure before the Assembly of Delegates. The Commission staff has indicated that attendance at that to show support is definitely needed. I do believe we're gonna have the final word tomorrow or by Thursday morning as to when that will be scheduled. Regardless, we're gonna have a boatload of work to do over the next few months. So be ready for some conversation.
Those of us who were there, I think that the Assembly reacted favorably that we were there.
Well, the Chamber.
Commission, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the Cape Cod Commission.
Cape Cod Commission, that we were there. They noticed. I think they did.
Oh, I agree. No, I think it was very good. The folks who were, you know, board members who were there, Cindy Williams was there. There were a number of neighbors there. So it was good. Yep, two Selectmen. I announced, you know, the folks from the town who were there, you know, and also Cindy. So no, that was very good. It was very well received.
We also need to thank Sarah somehow.
Oh, she did it, yeah. They actually asked me for a quote for the... They do a...
Kind of toot her horn a little bit.
Not a newspaper, but a monthly... It's called The Recorder. And so the woman who is in charge of that asked me for a quote, and I was... I just said Sarah Cordjev's presentations were just phenomenal. She did such a great job with those. When I got up to speak, I'm like, I'm not really sure what to say because Sarah said it all, so, you know.
It went well. I thought it went well.
It went very well.
Okay, with respect to the Historic District and Historical Commission, anybody have any comments about that?
So I can tell you that Mr. Ramadino's before the commission tomorrow night for a notice of intent because of the age of the building, I believe. As well, next tomorrow night.
Can you explain that to me? I still don't understand. The church wants to tear it down? And you can stop them?
The building is over 100 years of age and is on the Historic 100 Year List. So they have to file a notice of intent under our demolition delay by law. And that's a hearing we're having tomorrow night.
The bishop may get you. Okay. Because they announced in... I'm a member of that parish. And they announced... They announced in church the other day that we're gonna tear the building down. That they didn't say, "We're trying to tear the building down." They didn't say, "We're going to your commission to get permission to tear it down." They said, "We're gonna tear it down." So we'll see what happens.
The church has a higher authority to answer to.
Yeah, that's probably true. I agree. Okay. Let me see here, okay. Board of Appeals, I looked at it. I don't see anything that jumps out as being a problem.
Do we have to deal with this one?
I don't... We did. We did only 1, 2, 3. We didn't do that one.
Okay. All right, deal with me while I...
What's next?
Any briefings and reports by board members?
I'll give you the CPC report if you would like. We are well into reviewing applications. We meet again Thursday night. We have had two nights of applications coming for review. We will have a few more. We have not started deliberations yet, so...
How much money do you have?
Just about $3 million.
And how much...
More.
The requests exceed level funds?
I believe it is, although one of the requests has been withdrawn, is my understanding, so...
And actually, that's a good one. If I might... Let me sit down. The Board supported the joint application for the Deacon's folly purchase. That has now gone a different route. Withdrawn the application.
May I ask what different route?
Somebody else bought it.
Oh. I...
That's a good different route.
I just knew it was withdrawn. I didn't know the reasons.
No, there's a purchase and sales agreement for the property by another entity, so...
So then that was 1.2 million of the applications that was... That's withdrawn. But there are still some significant applications before us. So we meet tomorrow night, Thursday night, 6:00 p.m. in this room if anyone's interested in attending.
Got a busy week.
I do have a busy week this week.
What's our next date of meeting?
Your next meeting date is December... Should be on the application, 3, which is the first Tuesday of the month. You have one application, which I have a feeling will be continued. So we may have zoning discussions. And you can't be here.
I will not be here because of CPC. And I don't know where CPC is meeting that night, whether where. I'm assuming we probably got bumped to the small meeting.
So am I correct in saying that our next meeting is December 3?
It is December 3. You have a public hearing that you will need to open.
And that we would... We think that we may end up having to go to the Assembly of Delegates on December 4?
Yes. And if we... When I know, you'll know.
Thank you.
I'll let you know ASAP. If we anticipate there will be a quorum of the Board, we do need to post it.
Will that be in the same location?
Yes, I do believe they meet at the same location.
Okay.
And...
Yes.
Did... Refresh my memory, if you would. Weechmere continued to December 20?
No, first meeting in January.
January, okay. Thank you.
What... If you know, why is it... Why do they keep continuing it, if you know? Thank you.
They are still going through the Conservation Commission, which, because it's near the water flood plain... Oops, excuse me. Sensitive site. They really need to iron things out with conservation before they come before this Board.
My understanding, and we'll see...